Good evening and welcome to the Fall River School Committee Forum sponsored by Fred TV and the Durfee Student Government. My name is Pamela Martin from Fall River Government Television and Fred TV, and I will be serving as your moderator. We've had a request that we stand, please, and salute the flag if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Take a little breath, right? Let our last-minute arrivals get into their seats. Thanks, students. We all set for this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We've had fun working with them. I would like to introduce our students as they will be our panelists. Faith Cudero is our student body president. Many of you already know her. Brooke Tobias is our student body vice president. Madison Tobias is our student body treasurer. And to my right, Obier Herrera is our student body secretary. Thank you. I want to point out that the students really hammered out these questions over the course of a couple of weeks. And, you know, I want to hear from the students. They're the reason that we are here. They are focused, they're compassionate, and they are our future. And I want you to know that I, and we all do, know how very busy you are and your wonderful ambassadors for Durfee and for our city. So I appreciate you taking the time. Involvement in democracy should and can happen before age 18, and we adults need to foster that community engagement. Candidates as well, thank you for being here. Incumbent, Mr. Kevin Aguiar is sick and unable to attend. Incumbent Ms. Michelle Mimi Laravee is also under the weather. Ms. Rena Georgia Brown and Mr. Warren Alves ended their campaigns. However, their withdrawal came after the deadline, and so their names will be on the ballot November 7th. So, candidates, we have decided to seat you in order as your names will appear on the ballot. That was decided by a draw by our election commissioner, Mr. Ryan Lyons. So we have incumbent Ms. Shelley Ann Pereira, Mr. Charles Chase Jr., Mr. Thomas Corey, right on cue, our incumbent. Another incumbent, Mr. Bobby Bailey, who I understand is on his way, Mr. Colin R. Dias, and incumbent Sarah O. Rodrick. Our panel will ask questions in the order in which they are seated, and candidates will respond to the questions in the order in which they are seated. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond. So, for example, Faith, we went over this. You will ask the first question to Ms. Pereira, then we'll go down the row. Everyone will have 90 seconds. The second question will come from this end over here, and again, start over with you, Mr. Chase, okay? There will be no opening statements, however, we will allow 90 seconds at the end for closing remarks. My colleagues Pauline McGrath and Evan Massad are keeping time in the front row, and they will alert you of 30 seconds, and then 15 seconds, and then please stop. Make sense? I think we're ready to go. Faith, you're up. You'll ask the first question, please, and it will be directed to Ms. Pereira.
All righty. So my first question is, findings from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey indicate that in the past two years, 56.6% of teen girls in the United States reported feeling sad or hopeless for at least two consecutive weeks. For boys, that rate is 28.6. The numbers are even higher for LGBTQ+ students, students of color, and students living in poverty. Besides hiring additional adjustment counselors, what supports will you put in place to combat the serious issue of teen mental health?
Hi, Faith.
How are you?
Thank you. That really important question. I'm going to be real here. This is something that is very close to my heart, as I have loved ones who struggle The broader answer is, what is the country doing for mental health? Why do we still have a stigma? Why can't it be a conversation? Why isn't depression the same as diabetes, right? That's the bigger question. Why don't we have funding, right? I have a lot of questions. Why do our kids have to wait three months to find someone to talk to? This is very close to my heart, so I'm sorry if I'm not articulating myself the best right now. But I think we could do in the schools, what I'd like to see, peer groups. I think peer groups are helpful. If you're sitting amongst people of your age that are maybe dealing with some of the same things, then it really normalizes your situation. Because mental health, albeit not what we're looking for, is not abnormal. These kids aren't abnormal, they're very normal. And I think maybe providing peer groups, because I know we're looking at adults when we talk about our Saks and our therapists, but I think we can learn a lot from each other. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Mr. Chase, you're up now, please. 90 seconds.
I feel that one of the main problems with this comes from the media, that the media has broadcast the problems with this pandemic, et cetera, so that since then, numbers have doubled as to the suicide rate amongst young students. We have to get back to normalcy so that the media is broadcasting normally, giving us the news so that we can determine with our past knowledge what the true situation is. As far as helping them, the federal government really should be helping more. The dollars that are involved with this are astronomical, and it's only when the family is given the, shall we say, the respect for raising the children that we can really get into doing this. There are so many cases where the students just aren't able to function because of family situations, whether it's their economic situation or what. The family has to get back on a stronger standing to help those students. If they do get back in a better situation, they're going to be good. But the thing that scares me...
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Okay.
Circle back around. Mr. Corey?
First, I want to say thank you to Fred TV and to the students here for taking such an active role in what's going on in the Fall River community. Thank you, kids. In regards to the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, I'm a former adjustment counselor here at Durfee High School, and I co-created a program called Peaceful Coalition back in the late 90s, and it lasted for a good 15 years. And we worked annually with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to find out where our students were falling within that. And we learned a lot of astounding facts about what was going on with the kids, and especially in regards to mental health. Mental health can be perceived in so many ways, but when you have regular group programming as we did, our program ran on Friday afternoons here at school, and the seventh or the last period teacher would sign off to allow their student in their class to attend our regular meetings. And within those meetings, we had up to 40 and 50 kids sitting around a circle, all discussing this together. And when there's that level of camaraderie in regard to the problem, you find solutions, and then you design activities to support those solutions as we did. On Fridays, we would be at the Bank Street Armory after school until 7:00 PM with programming, breakdancing, basketball, football. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll skip over Mr. Bailey right now. Mr. Dias, you're up. 90 seconds, please.
Thank you for your question, Faith. And to answer your question, I myself am someone who deals weekly with symptoms of panic, anxiety. So I know how it feels. I know how it feels to deal with these sort of symptoms. And what do I do personally to help myself? I stay busy. I partake in activities. I attend Bridgewater State University. I'm very active on campus there. We need to make our campus, Fall River Public Schools, very active. And how can we do that? One, we need to work with our community partners, and two, we need to work with our educators. We need to make the Fall River Public Schools a place where community nonprofits, our educators can have many extracurricular things to do. And what can I do as one school committee member to partake in that? One idea I have comes with sports. I believe that we need to have a fee-free system for sports leagues to use the Fall River Public Schools' beautiful fields. No fees for these great organizations that do great work in this community. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Rodrick?
So first off, I think what Colin just did was extremely important. So identifying that we can have these conversations without stigma, without bias, actually opens up those doors to really normalizing conversations around mental health and wellness. So I'm a therapist, I've been a therapist for 20 years, this is what I do every day. So 90 seconds is not enough time for me to sum that up. But we have these conversations early and often. We start them in elementary school. We start getting kids readily available and willing to start identifying their feelings and figuring out who they can go to, who their support systems are. We start looking at a culture shift. It really has to be about reducing the stigma around mental health. So often, we are reactive to mental health issues as opposed to being proactive. And there's a lot of things that we can do proactively to really enhance the effects of the protective factors that we know can support kids. So that looks like group supports in your schools. So directly bringing in our community partners to address specific needs. Then we look at more opportunities for connection, for relationship building, for belonging, because we know that when kids feel like they belong, that we see a reduction in mental health symptoms. And then in addition to all of that, one of the things that we can do is really leverage the power of our youth to be able to make those connections with one another, to really lead those conversations, to lead those discussions.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to point out the 988 hotline that we have discussed before here in school and in the city. It's available 24/7. If you or someone you love perhaps could benefit from that hotline, please reach out and utilize that. Thank you all. It's a tough question, and we started that round, Faith. Thank you for that question as well. We're moving on to round two now. Question will be directed by Brooke to Mr. Chase.
So I have a friend whose mom was worried when she found out that her daughter had to transfer to the Fall River Public School System. Now that daughter is very involved and has the same, if not more, opportunities at Durfee than she would anywhere else. How can you accurately reflect positive stories like this to not only the rest of Fall River, but neighboring communities?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that one?
I have a friend whose mom was worried when she found out that her daughter had to transfer to the Fall River Public School System. Now that daughter is very involved and has the same, if not more, opportunities at Durfee than she would anywhere else. How can you accurately reflect positive stories like this to not only the rest of Fall River, but neighboring communities?
Oh, you said she had cancer.
So how can we talk about the schools to make it positive? Because people, you know, think it's bad, but then when they come here, they have a good experience. Mr. Chase, the question that we have from Brooke right now is elevating the reputation of Durfee as a whole, right? Leaving some of the bad things in the past and elevating and talking about instead our students, our four student ambassadors that we have here who are wonderful role models for Durfee. Is fairly accurate? Fairly accurate, okay. So elevating our reputation.
One of the main things, I think, is affording the family the respect that they have for raising the children. Right now, the state is trying to promote the teachers raising the children. Teachers don't have time enough for that. They are trying to, many of them, to get rid of Common Core, some of these things that is hurting our education. They want to get back to teaching the subjects, and teach to the subject and test the subject. When they work on projects that the students can enjoy and that they are one-on-one with a teacher, et cetera, I think things are going to change very radically. But right now, we just don't have that backup in the regulations and rules. We have to get back to teaching, teaching the way we taught years ago, maybe. And it's mainly the subjects, the main subjects, math, science, English, and history. For example, history. If we don't know the past history, how are we going to keep from making mistakes in the future? We've got to know all these things. Mathematics, I hit three blocks of remedial MCAS that I was teaching. I got 37.5% of them in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
If you try.
Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Corey, again, kind of getting our reputation back into some good standing here.
Brief story, 1997, there was a BB gun incident, and the local newspaper ran a front-page headline on that. I remember being in the principal's office with student government and the late Ms. Kathy Assad complaining to the news media that all you want to do is pump negative news when there's so much other great stuff going on inside a Durfee High School that doesn't get out there. So it's really positive versus negative, that's the war. I have four children, all Durfee High School graduates. My kids were active on campus, they're adults now, and their lives are wonderful for having been built on the activity they learned in high school. So let's keep pumping the positivity that comes out of the school like the AP Capstone Program, you know, that so many great kids are involved in, and not all of the negative stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dias?
Hi, thank you for your question again. I'm going to have a little bit of a different response. I here on the campaign trail, I've heard from many parents, a lot of community members, that they don't have that much trust in the Fall River Public Schools. Some of that comes from the issues of bullying, some of that comes from the issues from two years ago when we had a superintendent that was running amok, and we had a school committee that didn't want to hold him accountable. How do we restore positivity and restore? We need to restore public trust, that's the answer right there. We need to restore public trust, and how do we do that? We be transparent and straightforward with the community. If I'm elected, I'm going to, I'm going to be elected, I'm going to take an oath, take an oath to the city of Fall River to address the issues we have. I'm going to roll up my sleeves, any issue that comes down, we're going to address it in an honest and positive manner, and we're going to work to continue. And I believe the school committee over the last two years has done a great job and has done a great job in restoring trust. I want to be a part of them. We have one open seat. Technically, we have five, six open seats, but we have one non-incumbent open seat, and I want to work with them and continue the progress that has been done.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Ms. Rodrick, please.
So yes, we have six open seats, so none of us are guaranteed to be re-elected. It's a good catch. So how do we restore some of that positivity in our reputation? So we have a tendency in this community to lean into the negative, right? We hear stories, we hear a little bit of a story, and then we sort of sensationalize it, and we feed into it. What we can't do is also turn the table and look at toxic positivity, because that's not going to help, right? So part of the thing that we really need to do is look at transparency, openness, and honesty in what's happening in our buildings every single day. And that is acknowledging that there are some things that really aren't so great. And when an incident happens, we have people that are proactive and try to get in front of that to tell the real story without obviously breaking confidentiality or any issues like that. But that proactive piece will do us a whole lot of good in terms of restoring some of that trust that my colleague here was just talking about. So this is going to require a community culture shift. We have a self-esteem problem in Fall River, I've said this for the last 10 years. We don't see ourselves as being worthy or having the value that we absolutely deserve as a rich, diverse community with unique needs and unique strengths. So some of this work of rebuilding that reputation and making families less scared comes from that proactive piece.
Thank you. All right, we move on to, after, sorry, Ms. Pereira.
Thank you, Brooke, for the question. It's really weird when I'm answering and I can't see you.
I want to make sure you can...
I'm short, that's the problem, vertically challenged. I actually said this the other day, I was having a conversation with someone on WSAR, and we were talking about teacher retention, but along the same lines, right? And I said kind of something similar to what Sarah said, is that sometimes I think that we're like a high school kid with bad self-esteem. Like, we just see all the negative stuff that we want to fix, and we don't, as a community, look at all the amazing things we're doing. And it also goes to what Mr. Corey was saying, newspapers tend to report the bad stuff. That's news, I guess. But yeah, so you may see a report of bullying happening in the schools, you're going to hear about that. But you hear about all the other peer groups that are working and anti-bullying programs, or kids that are reaching out and doing the right thing, those stories aren't reported. So then we come to, who tells that story? We tell that story. We have to advocate for who we are, right? Whether we're in Fall River today, or, you know, Rhode Island or Nashville tomorrow, everybody should know you're proud of where you came from. And if we all articulate these things, then eventually that's the story, right, that gets out there. Some cool things, I think, are going on, your superintendent is on WSAR, I think, like once a week. I forget what it's called.
Good news and positives.
Good news and something, yep, it's great. It talks about good things happening, which, yes, we have to talk about the things we need to fix. That's usually what we do one Monday a month, right? But we have to also start talking about the good things we fix.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Question three comes from Madison, and will first be directed to Mr. Corey.
To be honest, most Durfee students don't even know who is on the school committee or what they do. How often do you plan to visit a school, watch a class, attend a play or game, and talk with students? What school will you pick first to visit and why?
Well, in deference to Mr. Dias's remarks about the past school committee, when I was served two terms on school committee after my 30-year career here at Durfee, and we had a student government delegate on the school committee, and he was very proactive, and it kept us up to date on student-based issues, not only here at Durfee, but throughout the rest of the public schools as well. Also, on Wednesday mornings, it was a regular practice of mine to visit many schools throughout the district and Durfee. I have so many colleagues inside of this building that it was always a pleasure for me to be able to visit this school and see the continuing growth that this school, you know, has gone through, especially with this brand-new building. And so I was a regular face in the crowd on Wednesday mornings to all our public schools, and I promise to do that again if elected.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you for your question, and correct me if I missed a spot, but the first school I'm going to visit is RPA. I've heard a lot of, I want to make sure the progress that has been going on over the last few years continues, because that's a school that needs a lot of work, and we want to get it done. I'm not one to make many promises, per se, but I'm going to make one today, barring if I have, like, COVID or something extraordinary. I do plan on visiting one school a week throughout, and as I go on through, throughout the year, in the years I'm part of the Fall River School Committee, I believe it's very important that I get a first hands-on view. I'm not an incumbent, so there's going to be a lot of things I need to learn, and there's going to be a lot of people I need to learn from. Again, it's working with educators, working with our teachers' union, I see the president in the stands today, it's working with paraprofessionals, working with the people who are the experts, and then I can learn from them, and we can develop plans going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. And Ms. Rodrick, please.
So I think that's a little bit of a tricky question, because many of us work full-time, and we have traditional nine-to-five jobs, and so that's typically when you're in school. So being out to get to a school consistently, or every school consistently, is difficult for many of us, so I just want to put that out on the table. I have the luxury of being able to flex my schedule, but not everybody does that. So I don't want anyone to hear that if someone can't do that, that that means that they're not invested, because that's not the case at all. I think we can be invested in showing up for our students by attending sports games, by attending plays, by attending different events that are happening at our schools in their communities. We've talked for a long time about turning our schools into more of community hubs where we could get out there more often. The other thing that gets tricky about coming in during the school day is that you're learning, you're in class. The last thing that any of us want to do is disrupt that process. So I think it's important that we get in and we're seeing what's happening firsthand, and I think there's a place for that. But I also want to be careful about not turning that into, we're coming into buildings and, you know, where we're sort of disrupting the process that's happening right there and then. That can be really unsettling for a lot of kids, and it's the last thing that we want to do. So I think by showing up for our community in general, we get to know our kids, we get to know our staff, and by default, we learn what's happening in our buildings.
Thank you. And Ms. Pereira?
Thank you for the question. So I love Madison, I love coming to the academic events here, I think, more, I don't know if that makes me a nerd or just somebody who doesn't really do sports. But the graduation is one of my favorite times of year here. This one in RPA, I wasn't able to go to this past year, but that's, to me, is the shining moments. You're all just succeeding, and life is in front of you, and you're ready to go, and I look around and see teachers and parents so proud of you. But I do have to say, I've never been into a school during the day unless I was invited to do something. And again, I feel, would that be disruptive? Would my presence be disruptive to the flow of classes? I have been into the RPA, and of course, I've toured this building when it was, you know, first built, and consistently since then. And I think it is important for us to get into buildings like the RPA for the reasons of fixing them, right? So if children, if students are coming to me and saying, "This building's in disarray", we need to go in and take a look at what that means. So those types of things are important. But I think the involvement in the community is where you really get to meet the youth, and you really get to listen to and understand their experiences more than if I just walked around, you know, your classrooms. I'm excited to see another performance here, because this is an amazing stage. So, thank you.
Coming up, right? All right, Mr. Chase?
Well, I think many of you may have seen me holding a sign for my campaign around the city. I would do that maybe a couple hours, three to four days a week. I plan on having at least that much time to come over here. I won't be doing that, and this is what I will be focused on. I really want to know what is happening here, because as an outsider, my children are out of the school, you know, I don't have the connections here, and so I want to create the connections so that I can find out what is going on more. I hear things through different news sources, and that's why I am here right now, to try to help to find a way to get the level of education up from us being about 30th of industrialized nations to when I was in high school, first, second, and third. We may be great in the United States, which is what they're saying, but I want to see that, see that they are actually in the world, you know, compared with the world, what it's like. And it's only through experiences of coming in here that I'm going to find out what those problems, well, I won't say problems, what those challenges are. And hopefully, I'll make some contribution to improving the lives of the students.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Okay, question four comes from Obier, and we will take it away with Mr. Dias, please.
So my first question is, driving lessons are expensive, so some of us have to put off going for a license. An on-road lesson is about $90 to $100 each. Would you consider credit for a driving class as an incentive for good grades? For example, students who achieve high honor roll in a term will earn two on-road classes, and honor roll students will get one on-road class. Can this be done?
That's something I would have to ask legal counsel, that can be done. I do know one thing, with the millions and millions of dollars the school department receives, if it can be done, that's something, if that's something a lot of people support, a lot of students support, yeah, that's something we can advocate for. If that's something that can't be done on the school committee level, that's something we could advocate for, we could reach out to our state representative. State representative, I don't know what part of the city you're from, but we have Ms. Viola, Rep. Sylvia, and Rep. Schmidt, something that should be considered, and I'm sure that's something they... Rep. Schmidt, something that should be considered, and that's, I'm sure that's something they can get behind.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriks.
So I feel like that's a bigger question, because that's very much connected to a partnership with local driving schools, right? So they would also have to be in agreement that that's something that they would be willing to do with our students. I like the idea of offering different incentives for success, but I think we've got to also look at, not every kid is going to make the honor roll, but that doesn't mean that they're also not trying as hard as the kids who do make the honor roll. So I do think that there's a piece there, that we've got to look at, an array of incentives for our kids, being here, doing the work, putting in the effort, and then looking at how we can put in some incentives, so that way they can access the things that they need out in the community, because I'm looking at that as a need. You need to have a driver's license, unfortunately, in this community, in order to get to work consistently, right? It's just not something that you can do. It also opens up your opportunities to different schools, and different higher education options, and all of those things. So if we look at that as a way of incentivizing the effort and the work that's put in, I think that's a really good conversation to have with our community partners, in an effort to collaborate and integrate that work.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriks. Ms. Pereira, please.
Thank you, Obier. That's a good question, and it brings it to transportation. What I'm interested in, at another point in time, would be hearing from students who have to use public transportation to get to school, because that's something I'm very interested in working on the city fixing for you, because you need access to be able to get to school. But you also need a car to be able to get to work, so I understand what you're saying, and it is very expensive. Again, that would be community partnerships. I don't think that's something directly that we could put forward, but something certainly we could advocate for. So we went back to that question previously, who are the school committee members, what do we do? So go back real quick, this is what we do. We basically approve policy, we approve your curriculum, we manage the budget, we hire a superintendent. There's a few other things, but essentially, that's the stuff that we do. And civics would be a great way for you guys to know who we are, and who your mayor is, and your state reps, because it is important. Because when it comes to things like this, when it comes to things like trying to find funding that you're speaking of for transportation, or when it comes to stopping, having MCAS be a requirement, these are all political movements that you have to be civically minded to be engaged in, and you are my future. So I am thrilled that you're here. This is my favorite part of the election process, is sitting down with you guys, because it gives me a real, real sense of, phew, I got, we got some good people coming up, you know? So basically, this is something we'd have to advocate for.
We do have some good people coming up. Mr. Chase, please.
Well, driving, both of my children, when they were coming here, here and the other schools throughout the city, they had major problems with riding on the bus, being, you know, it's hard to say some of the things that they experienced on the buses, but with their race, they are biracial, they're half-Japanese, half-American, and people would comment on things like that, and in not a good way. People would touch them, they're girls, no. So finally, we decided, all the way from, oh, partway through the elementary school, right up to high school, when they graduated, why, we partnered with someone else to drive to and from. But we made sure that they knew how to drive, so that when they were, when they got out, they would be able to drive safely, and not be frustrated by, you know, other things that happen. I think this is something that, I don't like equity so much, because you don't have creativity in equity, but in this case, why, I think equity, that no matter what your grade levels are, these students are all going to be going out there, and they do need to know how to drive, and they, the ones that can't quite afford it, they need a little more assistance than someone who can. I was fortunate, I, you know, I was head of a company, and, you know, I could take care of the kids, but some people didn't. And so when they didn't, my wife or the other driver would help those students to get to school. We have to help, help them all out.
Time's up, thank you. Okay, Mr. Corey.
I love your question. I remember when I was a junior at Durfee, and the day I got my driver's license and how excited I was. For a plan like that, it would be great if you kids were able to frame a plan like that, and you bring it to school leadership to present to the school committee, so that the school committee can iron out the fine points of such a plan, to see how workable it is, how feasible it is. Driving school is expensive, because gasoline's expensive, car repair is expensive, hourly fees are expensive, so it's difficult to contain all the costs. But if we could work out something and see if we can involve a partnership with the local driving schools and Durfee High School, perhaps something could be worked out, and I would be more than willing to look into that if elected. Great question, thank you.
Good idea. Okay, we start the next round. Faith, please, your question will be directed first to Ms. Rodriks.
Our principal, Matt Damaris, once referred to Durfee as a sleeping giant. He meant we are getting ready for great things. Do you agree? And what will, what will be great, and how are you helping to make it happen?
So I don't think they are a sleeping giant, I think they're great now, but I would say the same about the students at RPA as well, and all of our other community non-Fall River Public School District schools. I think we don't wait to become great, I think you're great in that moment that you are experiencing at this moment in your life. So what will be great is we have kids that are actively involved in their community, so that, we as adults need to be fostering that, so that way, that engagement and that community responsibility and that civic-mindedness continues into the future. That's the part that's going to be great, right? The part that's going to be great is that you all become adults very soon, right? And again, I say the same about all of our kids. You become adults very soon, and you become active participants in these decision-making processes. You become active participants by practicing that now. So I disagree that you're sleeping giants. I get where he's coming from, and I appreciate it, but I think that we can't look at what's happening into the future, what you're going to be, because you're great right now. And that's the part that we have to really drive home for you guys, not waiting for greatness, you're doing it at this very moment, you're doing it by showing up. This is hard, right? You're sitting on the stage right now, and I can tell you that every adult here is nervous, but the fact that you guys are doing this, at much younger ages than me at least, you know, shows your enthusiasm and your dedication. That's the part that's going to be great, because you're going to be adults doing this great work in this community.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira, please.
Thank you, Faith. I don't know exactly what Principal Damaris meant by sleeping giant, but I'm going to make an assumption. I'm going to assume he's saying that this school is filled with so many amazing things, and it just needs to be shaken up to awake the students to, not that you're not great now, but to sort of a different level of what you could accomplish. I think that's what he was trying to say. And I personally think greatness is in service to your community. Martin Luther King said, I'm not sure what speech it was, I'm paraphrasing, you can look it up, Google it, but he was talking about greatness, and he said the greatest among us is not the doctor, or the lawyer, or, you know, the rich person or the smart person, but the greatest among us is the person who serves. And I think that what makes Fall River great is that we're a community that serves our community. We care about each other, and we build each other up. And I think that is some serious greatness that can happen out of Durfee. Durfee pride is an amazing thing, and when you share it with each other, believe me, it's visible, and we see it, we see it in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Chase.
That assisting people in the neighborhood and all these things for assisting other people, it's a wonderful thing, but one of the problems I've seen recently is that the moral upbringing of children is not there in school. When I was in school, we would have Bible reading, we would have speakers came in and lectured us on how to help others, help your fellow students, and help the neighborhood. I just don't see very much of that. But that's probably because I'm outside the school system right now, and that's one of the reasons that I would like to get in there, is to see what's really going on, so that maybe I can help to make improvements that everyone would agree are good things for the students, and help to raise the students to a level where, when they go out into the work world, that they're going to be respected for everything that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Mr. Corey, please.
Thank you. Going back to the question earlier about, you know, Durfee carries a stigma with it, but yet, the child who came here is aspiring. Mr. Damaris used to be the advisor to student government back in the 1990s and early 20s. In any case, Mr. Damaris is so rooted in student achievement, that he believes in the mission of this school to its core. We were colleagues, and we used to run assemblies and all kinds of cultural workshops together here on campus, and it lit up the school. We were in touch with every aspect of the student body, no matter what type of student it was. They had access to us, and there were questions, and answers, and involvement, and that's, the campus was so alive. I'm so proud to see that he's principal now, because he's lived out his mission of great student involvement, which embodied his career here at Durfee, and it also embodied mine. And I pledge to you that I will live to those goals if I am elected again to the school committee. I will do everything I can to support the endeavors of the student body. And right here on my phone, from last April, Durfee AP Capstone Program was celebrated at the State House in Boston. We had more students in AP Capstone than any high school in the state. That is to be celebrated, and that was BMC Durfee High School.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Dias, please, round us out.
Thank you for the question. And just very quickly, I just want to appreciate the comments by both Ms. Rodriks and Ms. Pereira earlier, talking about civics. Civics is something that's very important to me, especially local civics. I was someone, when I was a teenager, I knew who every single politician was in the city. And I think it's important that you, everyone on the stage, knows who their elected leaders are at the state, local, and federal level. But to answer the question about what Mr. Damaris said, I don't really, I can't speak for Mr. Damaris, but all I'm going to say in support of that, it's important that if I'm elected to the school committee, I'm going to be an advocate for every student, single student across, not only the district, but since we're in Durfee, Durfee as well, individuals who go to Durfee, not just from the Highlands, but the Flint, Corky Row, the North End, and the South End. Every single one of these students deserve a voice, their parents deserve a voice, and a seat at the table. I'm going to be someone who advocate, was a big advocate for open government transparency, come before the school committee, address your concerns. We need more of an open environment in the Fall River Public School System for every single parent out there. And thank you for your question.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. Okay, we move on to round six here. And the question will come from Brooke, and be directed back at Ms. Pereira, please.
Absenteeism is getting better, but it's still a huge issue at all grade levels in our city. Numbers released three weeks ago from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show 48.6% of Durfee students fall into the chronically absent category. Teachers need to repeat lessons, and the kids who attend school regularly are getting bored. You are aware of the D4 policy. Do you think that it is working, and what will you do?
So whether the D4 policy is working is up for a debate in an upcoming subcommittee meeting. We have those, and you can watch them. I think it's the 30th, and that's going to be, I believe, on the agenda. So it is something we're looking into to see the effectiveness of it, right? Because the last thing we want to do is have policies and continue policies that aren't effective. And we certainly don't want to have policies that are punitive, right? We want policies in the school to be proactive, to be able to engage and identify what students are struggling, and why they're not showing up, right? Whether it's they're not showing up for health reasons, is it academic reasons, is it transportation, which, again, I can go back to transportation issues, because I know we have quite a few of them in the city. And I think that is an obvious block to attendance, right? So I was talking the other day with a colleague, and she was talking, Ms. Larrabee, actually, and she, we were talking about the students, and it was students talking, it was about having to wait out in the cold, and I didn't realize that when you're using public transportation, we don't have those, you know? So if it's raining and snowing, and I got to wait out there for 20 minutes, I mean, that is something that's a barrier for kids to go to school. So what you do is you talk to some people, like your city councilors, because that's a city thing, you talk to your mayor, you find out who's running for mayor, you talk to those people, and you say, "We need those there, so that I can go to school and not have to stay in the snow."
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Mr. Chase, you're up.
I've, when I was getting signatures for going on the ballot, I asked every single person that wrote a signature for me, what is the number-one thing that you would like me to work on when I go on the committee? I was thinking that it was basically regarding either education, or, you know, the parental or the family situation. It was not. It was bullying. Bullying was the number-one thing, out of 550 people that answered, and this was down in the southern part of the city, that I was doing it in three different sites. Possibly up here in the northern, we don't, whereas, which is where I live, why, we don't see that so much, but I asked them, "What kind of bullying?" Well, it's bullying from the students, but it's also bullying from the teachers, and that kind of hurt me a little. I didn't, I never even thought of that. It forms different types of bullying supposedly, and it can be with grades, it can be with your philosophy, it can be different reasons. I think we have to find out, have a survey, and find out from a large number of students in areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Different areas.
Mr. Corey, take it away.
It's a tough, tough question. The D4 policy was instituted when I was still working here at Durfee as an adjustment counselor, and at that time, it seemed to work slightly. There were so many cases, though, where a child could have been sick, or the family had to go on vacation, or the kid had to go to a doctor's office during the school day. And so as long as there were legitimate reasons, teachers and administrators here at the school were able to work with that child and not, you know, penalize them over the D4. But chronic absenteeism is also an issue, where there's a lot of kids that just don't like to come to school, and that's why that policy was instituted in the first place. Perhaps the D4 policy has run its course, and now we need a new idea. I've been off the school committee for a couple of years, but I'd be willing to sink my teeth into it again, moving forward with the task force, to try to find out the right answers, and to make sure that it's equitable along all lines.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you for the question. As of right now, I have a similar stance to Mr. Corey. If you look at the D4 policy, I've heard a lot of complaints about that from parents throughout the last few months, I've been asked about it a few times. I hold the opinion you shouldn't punish children, because, you know, it's parent responsibility, there's a lot, there's a lot of different things that go into it. So I don't think you should be punishing children when it, a lot of times, what I'm trying to say, it may not be the child's fault, so it's something we should look at. I want to see if I'm part of those subcommittee meetings, I know they're debating it now, but if this issue gets pushed into January, and if I'm elected, if it's still an issue, you know, I want to see the numbers, I want to see if it's working, and I want to see if children are getting punished who really shouldn't be getting punished, it's really not their fault. I don't think we should be keep putting them at fault, but attendance, in a general stance, we should be collaborating with our stakeholders, we should be working closely with our teachers, our school administrators, those who have the boots on the ground to make, again, a more constructive, robust policy that won't be, that won't disenfranchise children from low-income areas of our city.
Ms. Rodriks, please.
So that is a topic of conversation that's coming up, as you've heard. Anecdotally, I can give you some information, that lots of kids are talking about how it's been ineffective and punitive. and punitive. Families are talking about it. I think it probably served a purpose at one point, but I think the needs of our community have changed so much that it has become a punitive measure that really penalizes for students for things that are often outside of their control. Because this isn't just something that happens at the high school. This is also a policy in place at our traditional middle schools. And so we know that middle school students in particular can't get themselves to school. And if transportation is a significant barrier to getting kids to school, then we can't be looking at that as a reason to give a child a 65 in a class because they were absent four times. Again, what is the motivation for a kid to be able to show up and do well? So my, I have strong feelings about it, and that's no secret. But I think we've got to look at different ways of improving our school culture and climate to make kids want to come to schools, because we shouldn't have kids that don't want to go. I think that's inevitable sometimes, but school should be a place where kids feel safe and secure, and they want to come here. So I think part of the issue is setting that up for folks. I think the other thing is, we've got to look at other ways to get that instruction to those kids, so that way we don't have students that are sitting and having lessons repeated. And from what you said, they're bored, right? We've got to engage both sides of those, or both levels of those students.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriks. That's it for round six. We move on to round seven. And Madison, will you get started, please?
Marching band 15 years ago used to have 100 students. Now there are about 20. It's like that all over the country. But I care about Durfee. What is going on? Why do students put activities in sports, and how do you plan to get more students to join?
Mr. Chase, you'll start off on the questions about getting students to join sports, marching band, and becoming more involved in the Durfee community.
Well, I think it goes back to the Greek philosophy of sports and education, they come together. It's necessary for your physical health, but also for your mental health. And when you're involved in sports and music, dancing, things, these extracurricular activities, I find that your grades naturally go up. This is a very important part of education, and it's getting cut in all sorts of schools, because supposedly there isn't enough money to go around. But there's other ways that that money could be brought in there by not doing things that, you know, paying for things that are not so necessary as something, as those extracurricular activities are. It really does, and I've seen it with many of my students, that I taught in college and I taught high school, but mostly college, and those students that are very active in sports, they know they have to keep their grades up in order to stay, stay in the sport. And so it helps to give them an incentive to work towards it.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
So, marching band. In 2006, I remember traveling with the marching band to San Miguel and the Azores, and for one week. And it was just a most wonderful trip. And the kids got to play three major concerts and march in two parades. And it was a source of pride for the city and the school. My daughter was involved at that time, and my daughters were also heavily involved in Durfee softball throughout their time here at school. So I'm a believer, and the Fall River public schools have music programs beginning in the fourth grade. And that builds so much of what goes into the symphony orchestra, as well as the marching band. So what we ultimately need is parental or guardians at home to advocate to their child, please get involved in all of these enrichment programs, like the marching band and sports and other great programs that are run here at Durfee High School. We need the parents to really push their kids into it. I'm afraid that social media is taking over so much of that time and space in a child's life. Divorce yourself from the phones and get into the band and get on the playing field. Thank you.
Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you. And something that I can legitimately do as a school committee member is two things. One, I think we need, we have beautiful sports fields that were just made with tax, where our city's taxpayer dollars, for the most part, we have some sports fields. We need to make sure our sports fields are maintained, so in the next 10 years, we don't have to make a new sports field, a new baseball field, new football field. So we need to make sure we maintain our fields. That's very important, that we treat our buildings with respect. That goes for all buildings, but to narrow it down to sports right now, we need to maintain our sports fields. Two, as I mentioned earlier, we need to remove the fee for outside organizations, because it's not just sports in-house in the Fall River public schools. We have other organizations throughout the city that use our facilities, especially at Durfee High School. We need to remove the fee for outside organizations to use the fields, so it's easier for their, for them, so they don't have to charge more. To those parents who are members and whose sons, daughters are members of these organizations, that's two ways we can, again, improve the athletic capabilities of our Fall River public schools and help the taxpayers in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriks. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Dias. Ms. Rodriks.
So, Mr. Rodriks was actually a very proud band member.
Okay.
Longer than 15 years ago. Mrs. Rodriks has no clue how to play any instruments, so I can't help you on that front. But how do we get more kids involved in marching bands and different sports activities? We get them involved by creating a culture where kids want to be here, want to stay, and want to positively represent their school. I do think that this starts way before they even get to high school. We had a conversation on Monday about having another band teacher, and that band teacher would focus on the elementary and middle school students, right? I asked, "Why do we wait until fourth grade to get our kids involved in that kind of thing?" And there are some developmentally appropriate reasons why we don't get our kids involved until then. But if we start them young and we get them really excited about the activities that we have to offer, and we create a culture and climate where kids want to be here, want to belong, and we encourage our staff to also stress their excitement about these kinds of things, we'll get more kids through the door. My husband, to this day, still talks about his band teacher, still talks about his, I don't even know what it's called, the person that was running the marching band, right? Like, these are the things that carry you into adulthood, but it starts early. So we get them early, we have those conversations right from the beginning. They're coming into kindergarten, we're getting them excited, and we create a culture where they all belong.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriks. Ms. Pereira, please.
Hi. So, I would say, sometimes it's, my fiancee actually is a musician, and he will tell you I play a mean triangle. But I was never in band at school. I was never, I never, like dribbled a ball or anything like that. It just wasn't for me, right? I was involved in sad Amnesty International photography programs. So I think, how do we get more kids involved? Well, if, if we have, if we have a school where kids aren't involved, then my question would be, do we have enough variety? Not every child has the same wants, right? So I would think that. And then I'd also want to make sure that there wasn't any kind of cost that was preventing kids from participating, right? So if, say, I did want to learn how to play guitar, is that going to prevent me if my parents can't afford the guitar? And what can we do to make sure that we're putting those things in the hands of our students if, you know, if they want them? And then, you know, Mr. Corey made a good point. When we're talking about younger kids, too, parent involvement is important. So are we doing, this is something we can look into, are we doing a good enough job informing parents of all the activities that are at the school, and, you know, and how this is so beneficial, right, for a well-rounded education? And then my other concern, I hate to keep talking about transportation, but I have a city counselor in the audience and somebody running for mayor, so I might as well take advantage. I would love to see some transportation at night, so that if kids are coming to Durfee to participate in a program, they have a ride home.
Ms. Pereira, it's going to have to wait.
Okay.
All right, round eight we go. And Obea, you are going to start, please, and direct your question first to Mr. Corey, Obea.
So, we all know there's a nationwide teacher shortage, and there are positions that continue to stay open in our district. Why do you think teachers and staff leave for jobs at schools outside of Fall River, and how can we get more teachers in our schools?
I'll cut right to the mustard. Sometimes Fall River pays are in the lower tier within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's one of the factors. I'm thinking about an out-of-the-box idea of trying to create what they call a, similar to a TIF agreement, when you want to support a new company coming into the community. Maybe we can support new teacher recruits coming out of college and give them some type of rent subsidy to let them afford living here, so that they commit to five to six years of their service to stay here in Fall River and not shop district upon district, from one district to the other. I want to hold a young recruit coming out of college for a good amount of time, because the most important thing is the connection, the emotional connection between teacher and student. That's where the real education builds. It's in that emotional connection. And so if we can start thinking about novel ideas, perhaps maybe we'll arrive at some solution. It's a tough problem, though.
Thank you, Obea. And thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you. And I support some of the, some of the mentions that Mr. Corey said, especially with the, most particularly with the student-teacher connection. And going off a student-teacher connection, one thing I want to advocate for is teacher security. I've heard from some former educators that they left early because it's getting out of hand. They don't feel secure in the classroom. So that's one thing we need to do. I'm going to have to speak more and more teachers now throughout, if I'm elected, during the campaign, throughout the school districts, to see what their concerns are, so we can develop a concrete plan as to why other teachers don't want to come into the district. We, I believe we just did pass a new collective bargaining agreement that gave incoming teachers, first-tier teachers a pay raise. So I think we need to give it some time. We'll see how the hiring process is going along. Let's give it a few months in regards to that. But again, I think we need to have a conversation with, again, the stakeholders, the people who are on the ground, the educators, to see what their issues are, and that, and see what their issues are, and then that's why other educators don't want to come to this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriks.
So, this is a national issue, right? This is not just a Fall River problem. There was a recent study that just came out that showed that teachers actually get paid 73 cents on the dollar in comparison to other, other fields where they require the same education level. So to put that into perspective, about 30 years ago, that was about 90 cents on the dollar. So actually, teachers can get paid more money doing other things. And unfortunately, there's a whole lot more responsibility that comes with being a teacher now than there was 30 years ago. The other piece to that is, I think it's hard sometimes to attract teachers to a district. That does end up with a negative perception. That's our responsibility to change that narrative, right? We have a responsibility to do that, to attract teachers into this district. I think it is important to get new teachers straight out of college. There's a lot of different incentive programs that get them right as they are graduating, even before they've matriculated, so that way they can get into our buildings. And then we get a commitment from them, and then they stay. I think the other piece to that is, it is important to look at our pay rates. We are not as competitive as we should be with other districts. We had this conversation about our substitute teachers the other night. So if we're getting, if our teachers are getting paid $10 less than what they'll get paid to work at another school, then yeah, they're probably going to go work at the other school, because the cost of living in this society is really high. And so people need to be able to take care of their families.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira, please.
So, great question. I'm probably going to repeat a little bit of what some people have said. This is a national issue, right? So it's not Fall River. People don't want to teach in Fall River. This is a national issue. But we do have to pay our teachers more. Everything everybody said up here is absolutely correct. And we are making efforts on this school committee to do just that by way of the last meeting, increasing our substitute pay, because they should get paid the same, in my opinion, or more, as somebody who's going to be going to Somerset to sub, or Diamond to sub. A Durfee sub deserves that. And we're working to make sure that happens as a group. Also, it is about telling our story, right? It goes back to that. We are the tellers of our own story. And if we don't go out there and share these good experiences, it's going to be hard to get people to want to come in if all they hear is negative. And I know there are good experiences, because I'm out in the community, and I have, you know, just not too long ago, had a, somebody come up to me who was a teacher at the RPA, and so excited about his new job there, and how wonderful the kids were, and how amazing it was to teach there. And these are the stories that we need to share because they're true. And several, we do have to think out of the box as well. Out of the box on recruiting, out of the box on finding qualified teachers. I like the concepts of mentor programs from other colleges who come in, maybe mentor our students, student teach, and then love the environment. Let's show them a good time, come back and teach at Durfee. And we may be able to get them to do that. I also think Tom's right.
That's it. I know, I know.
I hate that I used to look at them and I don't see you.
Well, we have great ideas bubbling along on this stage. We're really getting a lot done. So, Mr. Chase.
Yes.
The question.
[laughing]
She'd dance afterward, right? Okay. The question, please. Let's recruit some teachers at Durfee, and let's keep them here, too, once they come in.
Well, my experience for 17 years of comparing two schools, Durfee and Diamond, the students coming in from Diamond, number one, I never had to do anything on training them in math or English, anything like that. Almost all of the students that we hired from Durfee, I had to spend maybe five minutes to 10 minutes every morning until they got up to par, so that they could work in the factory, they could understand the directions that are, you know, being given to them, and they can make the right mixtures. We were making candles. Make the right mixtures. I don't know exactly how it is right now, but my impression of Durfee was a very low impression. And I think when people research whether they're going to come to this, this school to teach or not, they're going to check the school's history, check the present, what is happening in the present, make a decision from there. And I don't, I have my doubts about the hiring of, for five years under contract. Yeah, I don't, as a new teacher, I don't think I would want to do that, to be tied down when I don't know exactly what's happening in that school. But the research is, this is one of the things that all students are doing right now when they, before they graduate.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I think we have time for one more question. So I think it's only fitting that it come from our student body president, and that's Faith. So it will be directed to Mr. Dias first, please.
All right. The final question is, can you specify what grades Fall River schools introduce sex education? Can you also specify what grade the Massachusetts Department of Education has in its guidelines begin the explanation of human reproduction and sexual intercourse? Do you agree with these guidelines? Do you think it would benefit the students of Fall River?
I don't have the guidelines right in front of me, so I couldn't speak to their guidelines. I apologize. I believe that from personal experience, but again, I would want to speak to those who are more, I believe that's something that should be, that should be introduced at the high school level. I believe that would be the most mature level. I think that answered your question. But again, that's a conversation we would have to have as a committee, and we would have to, I would love to hear from our educators who come before the school committee, who are like the deans of the science department or health department, to get their best, to get their idea as well, because we would go based off of their recommendation. That, but again, I believe high school would be my, my two cents. But again, I'd like to hear from the deans, whoever, it would be from the high school. I'm not sure, I'm not sure of their name, but I believe that would be the best course of action.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriks, please.
So, I think that this is a, this is always a hot topic, and so Faith, good job for doing that this time. So I think human reproduction, having that conversation about the science of it, and sex education are two different things, right? And so I do think that students need to know about what their bodies do. So we have people who start menstruating very young, third, fourth grade, and so they need to be aware of what's happening in their bodies. And that is a conversation that has to happen. I would prefer that that conversation happens at home, right, where our families are able to have those conversations. But we know that not every child, it has that opportunity. So I think sex education is a different topic, and that conversation happens later on, we're in adolescence. And I think that anyone who thinks that students are not having those conversations is, hasn't been around an adolescent, or doesn't remember what it's like to be an adolescent. But having conversations about what your body is doing and what the appropriate terms to call your body, those are all very protective factors. That keeps kids safe. Being aware of what your body is doing, what the proper terminology is, is a very different conversation than sex ed. When you're having sex ed conversations, you're also having conversations about healthy relationships, and that has to happen in adolescents. It's a really important piece to keep kids safe.
Thank you. Ms. Pereira, please.
So, Faith. So Faith. Could you repeat that question a little? You were looking for something, was it specific?
Yeah. I can repeat it for you.
Yeah, please.
It was, can you specify what grades Fall River schools introduce sex education? And then it was, could you also specify what grade the Massachusetts Department of Education has in its guidelines when to start the conversation?
Okay, great. No, I cannot. I'm gonna be honest. What I think, when you say sex education, I automatically put it together with health in my mind, because I don't think of sex education as intercourse. I think of sex education as sex being, you know, your sex, right? So now we're talking about health. So really, to me, it's more health, and that needs to start, in my opinion, really young, because we do have changes, like, you know, Mrs., Dr. Rodrick just stated, that we do have, you could have a child at nine years old starting menstruation. I don't think we should be teaching them about menstruation at 12, right? That would be two scary years. And yes, we can assume that's being taught at home, but it's not always being taught at home. So that conversation, to me, falls on deaf ears. We do have a responsibility here to make sure. I'm not saying we, we are the moral compass of our students, but certainly, I think, the earlier we can start on teaching them the science behind their body and health, the better. And that just doesn't include, you know, menstruation and puberty, but that also includes issues like smoking and vaping and drugs and alcohol and healthy relationships. And these are all conversations that I think can happen at a very early age, as long as it's done, you know, appropriately. So I, I, but I'll tell you what, Faith, I'm gonna find out the answers to those questions, and I'll let you know by tonight.
I do, I do have the answers if you want to reach out after. But I'll let everyone answer first.
Oh, good idea. Don't give them the answers.
Mr. Chase, please.
The human brain basically matures 22 to 26 years of age. Now, this stuff of where the state is saying, we've got to bring this stuff in from this year, all the way back to kindergarten. I couldn't believe it, that they would say something like that with all the stuff that's going around, whether it's swimming sports, where you have someone who is extremely strong, tall, a male, considers himself a female. That's fine. You consider yourself whatever you are. But to put that person in a shower, in a bathroom or something like that, this is way, way far too out, as far as what the sex education is going on with now. We have to have more emphasis on moral education. When people are morally thinking about how they live, then this will carry into things like this, so that as far as teaching childbirth, how this, how a child is formed, things such as this, that falls naturally into the high school age, somewhat in the middle school age. But elementary school, that, we have to focus on the real hard subjects.
Time's up, Mr. Chase. And Mr. Corey, please.
Yeah, Faith. So this idea came from the Department of Education and second, the Department of Education. It's a bureaucracy, and it's a bureaucratic idea that they want all public schools in Massachusetts to discuss. I was on the school committee when this became an issue, and it's one of the votes I regret taking, because I felt that we were forced into the issue bureaucratically from above. But rethinking it, my heart says I'm very nervous about this issue, because this is an issue that should be, to me, within the household. I have three daughters and a son, and I've discussed all of that openly with my children, but I don't want some school teacher in a health education course trying to teach my child about it, because I just, it just makes me nervous. Also, I think that these, this question that you posed, Faith, would be really good in a youth risk behavior survey. I think that in that format, you can discuss it more freely, openly, and honestly, and maybe determine where the kids are coming from, and then from that point, we can address the issue. As far as the classroom is concerned, I'm a little old school. I'll have to profess my faith in that. No pun intended.
Okay, I have a request from Faith, Brooke, Madison, and Obea. It's a question that they feel is very important. They'd like to take some extra time and have that done. Ask the question, which will go to Ms. Rodrick's and will be asked by, yes? Okay. All right. Brooke, please direct this question to Ms. Rodrick's.
I'm nervous. Pop quiz.
So I know security is doing their job, but so much time is wasted as students are stopped for carrying vapes. How can you stop repeat offenders so I can get to class on time when I'm not breaking the rules?
So, again, longstanding issue, and the problem with vapes is that they're really easy to hide. So it does become an issue of things are taking forever to get through the door. So I think there's not a whole lot of understanding on the behalf of your generation quite yet about what the dangers are of vaping, but we also know that if you have an adult that's preaching at you about how something is not good, that's not gonna do any, anything. So we've got to have some peer-led initiatives to talk to kids about some of these issues, right? So we've got to stop kids from bringing them into the building in the first place, and that helps you get to class on time, because you're not stopped at security. That becomes a community-wide issue, and I keep saying that because the schools only have you for six hours, seven hours a day. The rest of the community has you the rest of your lives. And so when we address these issues within the community, we have a better shot at stopping those things before they come through the door. So you can get to class on time, so you can get into your seat, so you can continue on your school day. So I think a few things need to happen. Again, community-wide discussions about that. I think looking at some peer-led initiatives. I think looking at some more systems in order to get kid, more kids through a lot quicker, and then being able to really educate kids about what this looks like, instead of just us sitting here preaching about how this is not great for your body.
Good question. Okay. Ms. Pereira, please.
Thank you for the question, Brooke. I didn't know this, this is the first, this is why I love sitting here talking to you guys. I didn't know this was an issue. Administrators don't come to our meetings and say, hey, it took me long to get to class, those three people had vape. I had no idea this was an issue. So it's definitely something I'm gonna look into. What can the principal do? What can the staff at Durfee do to make that process smoother, right? Is what you're saying. Because ultimately, the main point is what Sarah was just saying, is that it is a community job. It's the job of your healthcare workers. It's the job of your parents. It's right, so that you don't start vaping to begin with. And if you're not vaping, you're not gonna have any reason to bring it into the school, right? So that's the main reason, is why are kids starting this? What is getting them to do it? And what kind of programs maybe can we start early in our schools? We are doing them, but are they succeeding enough in middle schools that we can prevent kids in high school from still vaping? Other than that, I think the systems that we've put in here, I've heard good things about them. That's why I'm saying this is surprising to me. So I promise you, I'm gonna ask about this tomorrow, because I felt like the new systems we put in here were pretty smooth, as far as not having to go through your bags and get into your personal stuff. But I'm not getting that vibe. So definitely something I'm gonna look into, and I'm gonna give you my email, and I want to hear more from you both. Thank you.
Mr. Chase.
Well, I just feel that this seems kind of a lack of trust for the students by administration. When they come to school, you know, like, like it was said, they, all these problems should have been taken care of before. They come here for their, like you said, going through their personal, personal things, their handbags or whatever. That's not something that, well, if you go into a prison or something, maybe, maybe you would do it, but for school, no. That's, that's not something that should be done. I think it comes partly out of the drug problems that are around in the neighborhood, especially in certain parts of the city. The, you know, lack of wanting to go to school, trying to find out what, what problems they might be bringing into the school, that might be one of the reasons they're doing this. But I don't see, I don't see why they should be doing things like that. I just don't know.
Mr. Corey, please.
Yeah. So, kids in high school, young adolescents, frontal lobe issues, big time oppositional defiance disorder. It's sort of trendy, and social media promotes it even more, makes it super cool. You know, let's go to school, vape, man. Nobody, no. You know what I mean? Nobody can smell it, man. And we go to school stoned, man. It's awesome. No. So there needs to be, you know, I think we have reparative justice at the school. Is there still in-school suspension here at Durfee?
I'm not sure about that, but I know there is detention, and there is different consequences if you get caught.
So reparative justice and consequences, as well as what should be taught in health ed about the risks, the real risks of vaping, those are the steps that the school needs to take in order to try to minimize this problem, and it is a problem. And I'm so glad you brought it up, and I wish all the kids the very best in their health and welfare. So thank you for the question. It's a tough one.
Mr. Dias, please.
Thank you. And just listening to the question, I had a million different questions of my own, and I'm not asking you to answer every single one, but unless you want to. But one, are they searching your, your bags? Are they searching your person? Or are they?
So they recently turned up the sensitivity, so even my spiral notebook will set off the metal detector, and therefore, they do have to search our personal belongings when you're set, when it does go off for you, which is since the sensitivity sew up, it is very common.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Corey. That would be very uncomfortable, and that's something that just shouldn't happen. Again, we have, I'm sure there's, I see three security cameras, three security cameras attached, security cameras throughout the entire school. If you see a student with vaping, just go and take the vape. I don't think we need to go through all these extra precautions. I believe these security platforms are put in during a time when I was in high school because there was a rise in school shootings. That's what it should be meant for, to keep the publics, to keep the public, our students safe. We shouldn't be going the extra mile for doing that. But as Ms. Rodrick said, we should be looking into education, first of all. This is something I started with my generation. I'm only 23. It started when I was in high school. I don't think, I, I, not that I don't think, I know it's not something that's, that's something, it's very indiscriminate, vaping. Everyone, not everyone vapes, but the people I, I knew who vaped back in my time, it was different gener, different backgrounds. So again, I think.
Thank you, though, Mr. Dias. Okay, it's fitting that we start right back with our closing arguments. Okay? Our statements, I should say. Ms. Pereira, please. 90 seconds. I don't want to argue. We've had such a good forum.
Thank you, Faith, Brooke, Madison, and Obea. I pride in myself, and that's a beautiful name. To tell you a little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Fall River. I have two daughters who are off at college. They left me, but I'm still here, and I want to stay here and work to make your education special and important, and make your experience in the Fall River schools exactly what you need so you can go out and just do amazing things, and then come back to Fall River and continue to do those amazing things. I graduated from UMass Yamaris. I have a bachelor's degree in forensic photography and minors in women's studies and art history. I don't usually mention that because it puts people off, but I feel like you guys would appreciate that. And then I was a nurse for 13 years. I was also an educator for a while, and now I work at the Department of Transitional Assistance, helping families, families who are suffering for food insecurity. So all my life, I have spent working with families and youth in urban community and settings, and that's my passion, and that's what I love doing. So I hope that you guys stay engaged, and I hope one day, you're sitting up here doing this, because I can't wait to be able to vote for one of you. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate you guys. And just really quickly, I'm gonna say this, I don't care. We talked about youth struggling. If anybody is struggling, I want people to know, anyone looking, 1052 Pleasant Street, there is a 24/7 mobile crisis unit. I don't know if people are aware of that, but no youth should be sad. You are amazing, and you are important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chase.
Okay. I, I just wanted to bring up the things that I wanted, wanted to promote. There's a list of them here. Parents, a parent's right to raise their children is number one with me. School responsibility should be to train the students in knowledge, ability to reason, and the use of common sense. The last two, I don't see that much in present students going into colleges. 100% open communication between schools and parents. Parents should be able to find out anything that's going on in school. It should be a family, the school and the parents. Allowing teachers to teach what they, what has been taught in previous years. This is probably the biggest problem with, with the level of math, science, these hard subjects, is that you're not allowed to do it in the, what was done in the past. And I experienced that right here, when I was teaching here. Teaching traditional math, science, and English is paramount. Teaching the true and complete history so that you, you won't repeat bad mistakes. Teaching civics, you have to know civics if you're gonna know how to run the country or the state or whatever, and penmanship again.
Mr. Chase, thank you.
Could I just do two more things, please?
If we have time at the end, we'll talk amongst, with the students. All right? Mr. Corey.
Kids, I'm so proud of you for giving us this forum here tonight. It's, it's preparing you kids for the leadership in your own lives. I wish you all the very best in that endeavor. I am a lifelong resident in Fall River, a graduate of Durfee High School, as my four children are graduates of Durfee High School. My wife is a 34-year educator at CUS Middle School. I have a 30-year career here in the Fall River Public Schools. I taught social studies for 10 years here at Durfee, and then I became a school adjustment counselor, working in the realm of social-emotional. My mission is building peace and tolerance, and I did everything I could to create programs like One Earth, One People Under the Sun, and Peaceful Coalition, which built peace and the mission of teaching peace and role modeling peace throughout the Fall River community. I respectfully, when it comes to issues that our schools confront, I always worked at the ground level with the students. I was never above the ground level, so I was always in there with the students. I'll be ready for any issue that confronts our schools, and I ask you respectfully to consider me, Tom Corey, as one of the candidates for the six seats on November 7th in the final election. Thank you very much, kids, again. Really appreciate this.
Okay. Mr. Dias, please, a closing statement.
Thank you to our four students who asked the questions today, our moderator, Fred TV, and those of you in the audience. Thank you for, thank you for the time. Thank you for coming out, being engaged, as everyone else said, and I hope you continue to be engaged, as I have in my community. I'm running because I want to give a voice to everyone, everyone sitting up here, everyone in the audience, all of our students, our educators, everyone in our community. It's very important. And I just want to make one mention, I hope everyone goes and votes. Vote on November 7th. Our preliminary election numbers were terrible. It's important that we vote. It's important that we, again, have forums like this. We invite the public. We have more community engagement. That's something I'm gonna be big in, community engagement for everyone. Thank you, everyone. Hope everyone has a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Dias, Ms. Rodrick's, please.
So I just want to start off by saying that I really commend the four of you for coming here tonight, and I know everyone has already said that, but it takes a lot of guts to put yourself out there, and then to ask questions and raise concerns about what is most important to you. So please continue to stay involved. Please continue to stay engaged in your community, because you are the change that the community needs, right? Not the five, six of us. So I appreciate the opportunity to not only engage in critical discussion, but to also take those conversations and turn them into actionable, action steps. So I maintain that our schools have to be places of more than just academics. They have to be spaces where students and staff feel safe, they feel valued, and they feel empowered to make positive decisions for their lives. And I will, I do continue to advocate for social, emotional, and mental health resources in our schools, because this is the work that I live and breathe every single day. So it's our responsibility as a community to create those environments where our kids can express themselves, they can receive the support that they need, they can provide support to other people, and then really develop those skills necessary to handle any challenges that come their way. So academic success doesn't typically come without safety, connectedness, or a sense of belonging, and that's where our focus really needs to be.
Thank you, Ms. Rodrick. Students, candidates, great job. I enjoyed. I enjoyed this very much. I hope you did as well. And in my wonderful audience out here, let me point out sophomore Trevor Kamara and sophomore Cody Cabral. They are Fred TV students who took some fabulous pictures back there. Couple more spokes in the wheel, our Durfee teachers, Ms. Jessica Silveira, Ms. Kim Tibertino, excuse me, our student government and student activities coordinators. Thank you, ladies, for your patience. And as we said, of course, races for mayor and city council will be decided on Tuesday, November 7th. Please make it a priority to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. You can join us here on Channel 9, Channel 18 for live election night results. I'll be joined by Keith Tebow from FRC Media. Former mayor and Bristol County Commissioner John Mitchell will provide color commentary. Thank you again to everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pamela Martin from FRG TV.
And I'm Keith Tebow from FRC Media.
Join us on Tuesday, November 7th as we track polling numbers from the Fall River[1753.01]